The meeting of the Waterloo Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission to order for our regular meeting, May 2nd, 2017. I apologize, we're a little bit late getting started, but we'll get underway here. First item on the agenda is the approval of the May 2nd, 2017 agenda. And we do have one request, or one change from staff, and that is under Part B Platts. We're going to just combine both of those because it's basically the same thing, so we're just going to have one report and we're going to approve the final plat, or whatever. Second item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 4th, 2017. Those were mailed out in your packet, so if there's no changes, why then we'll ask for a motion that they be approved as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 4th meeting. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair both sides. That's carried. Financial report, March 2017. Mr. Schrader, would you like to explain that to us?
This is Schrader with staff. We've got the two-page financial report. It goes through expenses and revenues. See anything that is particularly out of line? I can try and answer any questions if you have any.
I just have one.
Okay.
Maybe I'm seeing this wrong, but it looks like expenses are way more than revenue? Am I?
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, they're going to be the...
I guess my question is, where does the rest of the money come from? Does that come from the city budget?
Yeah, it's budgeted that way. The planning department just doesn't have enough income sources to cover all of the expenses. We're a predominantly personnel department. We don't have a lot of non-personnel expenses. Obviously, there are supplies and stuff like that, but the vast majority of our budget is personnel, and the vast majority of our income is either from sale of properties or filing fees for requests, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the budget report.
So move.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is carried. Now we come to the time for oral presentations. This is a time where people in the room can make a presentation to the commission on an item that is not on today's agenda. Would you please come forward to the podium and give us your name and address and state your case? Okay, if no one comes forward, no. We'll move on to agenda items. First one is a special permit request by Buell Consulting, Inc. for a special permit to allow for the construction of a 109-foot major significance cellular communications tower within an M1 light industrial district located at 1050 Sheffield Avenue. We have staff report.
This is Western with staff. All surrounding properties are zoned industrial and have industrial uses on them with the exception of one home that is located directly to the east. However, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. The site is served by Sheffield Avenue, which is classified as a local street. The proposed location of the communication tower would not appear to have caused a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area, as the tower would be located to the southeast corner of the property adjacent to a gravel rarely-used street. This area has historically predominantly been used for salvage yards. The location of surrounding structure was built as far back as 1900s through the 1990s. The property located in the Zone X protected by levy as determined by the FEMA flood insurance The comprehensive plan and future land use map designates this area as industrial. A development such as this is allowable in the M1 district upon the approval of the special permit for a major significance tower by the Board of Adjustment as a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The site is located in the primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. The City of Waterloo zoning ordinance requires new towers within 500 feet of a one- or two-family dwelling lot go through the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment similar to a special permit. The proposed tower appears to be 332 feet from an existing home at 1107 Sheffield Avenue and will require issuance of reverence by the Board of Adjustment. The zoning ordinance requires that new towers and commercial zoning classifications be designed with camouflage, which would include a monopole tower with flush mount antennas. The proposed tower is a 109-foot monopole tower with a height of 100 feet to the top, the highest antenna. The tower would hold multiple antenna arrays, the primary one being for Verizon Wireless. The base of the tower would have a 25-foot by 40-foot fenced-in area to protect the tower and equipment, which includes a 12-foot by 20-foot equipment shelter building and a 35-kilowatt generator on a 4-foot by 7-foot concrete pad. The site will be utilized by an existing drive and gravel parking area. The applicant has indicated that they are proposing a tower in order to provide better coverage along Highway 218 and the 380 corridor in Waterloo and surrounding area. The area is currently served by other Verizon facilities in Waterloo, including facilities downtown and near Crossroads Mall. Demand on the network has grown exponentially and will continue to grow for the foreseeable future. To increase capacity, new facilities such as the one being proposed need to be built. Other than the request not meeting setback requirements from one- or two-family dwelling lot, all other requirements from the cell tower appear to be met. Based on the fact that the tower would be located on property that is Zone M1 light industrial and would be located on a large three-acre lot, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. Therefore, staff recommends the request for a major significance communication tower be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood or traffic conditions in the area. The request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan. The new tower would be located over 332 feet from the nearest residential dwelling lot, which would be more than twice the tower height from any one- or two-family dwelling lot. 109 times 2 is 218 feet. The nearest dwelling lot is 332 feet away, and subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Okay, are there any questions, staff?
This is Gustafson. Chris, are we aware of any concerns from surrounding businesses or the homeowner that will be affected?
Staff has not received any calls or concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant or representative of the applicant in the room, would you, is there anything you would like to add?
The staff report did cover well.
Okay, let's come forward and give us your name and address.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Brian Cabot, Buell Consulting, 1360 Energy Park Drive in St. Paul, Minnesota. And Mr. Western and staff have very well captured the essence of the site. The staff report's very well done. The site, as indicated, will help provide coverage in that immediate area around Highway 218, 380 surrounding areas. As noted, currently served by other sites in the vicinity that Verizon operates. However, capacity, as noted in the staff report, is a finite resource. And as it begins to be more taxed, we need to add more sites to offload the existing towers serving the area and just do a whole lot better job serving the community.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this issue, please come forward, give us your name and address and state your case. Okay, seeing no one, we'll turn to discussion amongst commissioners.
I would like to move that we approve the request by Buell Consulting, Inc. for a special permit to allow for the construction of a 109-foot major significance cellular communication tower within the M1 light industrial district located at 1050 Sheffield Avenue, and including the recommendations by staff.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I think that is carried. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is the request by Kurt and Christine Gillis for a special permit to allow for the establishment of a hobby farm with five chickens within an R2 one- and two-family residence district located at 2416 Ainsborough Avenue. We have a staff report on it.
This is Andero with staff. The applicants are requesting a special permit for a hobby farm that would allow them to keep five chickens in a four-by-eight chicken coop. Sighting question's on R2 one- and two-family residence district and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Surrounding land uses in their zoning are as follows: to the north, single-family homes zoned R2; east, single-family homes zoned R1; west, single-family homes and vacant lots zoned R2; and south, single-family homes and vacant lots zoned R2. Sighting question is a 40,144-square-foot residential lot. The area is mostly comprised of single-family dwellings with the construction of the homes ranging from the 1930s up to the 1970s. Also, there is commercial development approximately a quarter of a mile to the south at the intersection of West 4th Street and Ainsborough Avenue. The applicants are proposing a special permit to allow for the establishment of a hobby farm generally located at 2416 Ainsborough Avenue. The five chickens in question are currently on the property in a four-by-eight 32-square-foot coop in the rear of the property, with a four-by-four 16-foot square foot area actually being an area where the chickens can go inside away from the weather. The applicant has indicated that the five chickens belong to their son, and they are currently watching the chickens as their son's wife goes through medical treatment procedures. The applicant indicated that they may need to keep chickens on the property for up to three months while the procedures are being done, but there is a possibility that the timeframe could be longer. The City of Waterloo is currently in the process of amending the zoning ordinance that governs hobby farms. Word in the proposed amendment notes that there shall be a minimum area of 20,000 square feet devoted or more for small-sized animals such as rabbits, mink, ferrets, chinchilla, peacock, chicken, goose, pigeon, pheasant, quail, duck, and similar animals excluding roosters, guinea, and falcon. By doing a rough area measurement over the rear of the property behind the house, there is approximately 22,522 square feet, which could initially allow up to four small animals. An additional 5,000 square feet is needed for the fifth animal. It would appear that there is not enough space devoted for five chickens based on proposed ordinance changes. The proposed change has mentioned that all enclosures and fenced confined areas must be kept in a clean, dry, odor-free, neat, and sanitary conditions at all times. There should be no more than four cubic feet of manure on the property, which should be covered and fully enclosed with a roof or lid. So until the zoning ordinance is officially amended and adopted by the city council, staff believes that the across should be tabled until those changes do take effect. Therefore, staff recommends the request for a special permit to allow a hobby farm generally located at 2416 Ainsborough Avenue be tabled indefinitely until such time as a final adoption of the new regulations governing hobby farms are adopted.
Any questions for staff?
This is Gustafson. Tim, does that, so how is this going to impact this family that's keeping the chickens for their son?
So the chickens can still remain while the ordinance is being amended and going through the approval process.
Okay.
I have a question for you. You've been reading this, you've read that said the proposed change has mentioned that all enclosures and fenced confined areas must be kept clean, dry, odor-free, neat, and sanitary conditions at all times, and there should be no more than four cubic, you said feet.
It's feet.
The court says yards.
Yes.
Just for clarification.
That'd be a lot. I forgot to change it in my report, but it was mentioned at tech about that.
Okay. So it is supposed to be cubic feet. Four cubic yards is a lot.
Yeah. My mistake.
And I have one quick question. On page 34 up toward the top, it says, "Impact on neighborhood and surrounding land use." It would appear the request could have a negative impact on the area. What does that entail? It's toward the beginning of this.
I think he's talking about having farm animals.
That potential impact is having livestock in a residentially-zoned area, residentially-developed area, so typically you do not see chickens or other livestock in residential neighborhoods such as this. That's why we did say it could potentially negatively impact the area.
Okay.
I should also point out, commissioners and to the audience, that further on down in Item D in our agenda today is the amendment to the zoning ordinance governing hobby farms. So just so everybody knows that we are going to be considering the ordinance today.
So are you looking for a motion to table this, Craig?
I'd like to have this.
I, yeah. Right now, we need to have the applicants come forward and give their information, and then anybody else that wants to speak either for or against it. But I just wanted to point that out so we all were right up, knew right up front. So if the applicants are present and would like to come up and speak, please do so now.
Well, you covered mostly what we would have said. It's temporary. My husband would like to do it longer, but these chickens are my son, so he'll get those back when they go back to Des Moines. So, and they live in a residential neighborhood that allows chickens.
And we're hoping at least to get a temporary permit. After having the chickens, they're wonderful.
They are fun.
Talking to the neighbors, most of them say, "Oh, it's cool. You know, we'd like to have chickens too."
Oh, my God.
Okay.
We're not in it for business to sell eggs or anything. We get five eggs a day, and we give them away every year.
And it was kind of a shock when we, you know, were kind of told somebody needs to take these chickens, and, you know, so we were the ones that...
We volunteered because we had the fenced-in yard. My other son lives in Blairstown, and he doesn't have a fenced-in yard, but he's out far enough where, you know, he could have them, but he has coyotes. That was why he didn't want to do it.
But after having them, I mean, if we could get this passed to where we could have chickens there if we wanted them after my son takes these back, you know, they're not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. So just so we're clear what was discussed, staff is recommending tabling of it, but if the request is tabled, you can keep, you've submitted an application, and you can keep the chickens while that application is still pending. So tabling it wouldn't require that you have to get rid of the chickens, just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to come forward and speak regarding this issue either for or against? Okay, if no one else wants to come and speak for or against the issue of hobby farm along Ainsborough Avenue, I will entertain a motion to move forward.
Yeah, this is Tyson. I would like to have the board consider the staff recommendation that for the request for a special permit to allow hobby farms generally located at 2416 Ainsborough Avenue be tabled indefinitely until such time as a final adoption on new regulations governing hobby farms is adopted.
Okay, do we have a second? Further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair both sides. That issue is tabled for the time being. Moving on to Platts, we have the request by Crossroads Realty LLC for the, actually the preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Plat Number 11, which includes five commercial lots located adjacent to 2060 Crossroads Boulevard. The staff report.
This is Dornoff with staff. The applicant is requesting a preliminary final plat of property in question for a purpose of creating a five-lot commercial subdivision of the area's Zone S1 district. It has been since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. All surrounding land uses are commercial development in Zone S1. There are two lots that are not developed of the five, and those two would need to, when the two lots are developed, they would need to submit a stormwater detention plan. Lot 1 is located in Zone X, 500-year farm plan, as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate map, P number 190025, and panel number 0304F dated July 18th, 2011. None of the other lots are located at the flood plain. The Platts will be served by existing utilities. The future land use map designates this area as commercial, and the request would be in conformance with the goals and policies of comprehensive plan. The final plat consists of five lots containing a total of 9.77 acres of land, which is located at 2060 Crossroads Boulevard. The size of the lots range from 1.21 acres to 1.69 acres. Three of the lots have existing buildings on them, which currently house Tyrus Plus, Applebee's, and Sears Auto Center. Lot 4 is currently used for parking and has U.S. Postal Service drop-off boxes on it, and Lot 1 is currently undeveloped. The proposed Platts would remove 381 parking stalls currently allocated to Crossroads Mall. Lot 1 is currently undeveloped. Lot 2 has Tyrus Plus and currently shows 62 parking spaces. Lot 3 with Applebee's shows 84 parking spaces. Lot 4 shows 174 parking spaces. And Lot 5 with the Sears Auto Center currently has 61 parking spots. It should be noted that the S1 does allow and encourage shared parking for multiple sites can use the same spaces. However, even with the decrease in parking, the mall will still have a surplus of 725 parking spots, including 559 stall surplus in the main mall plat. Even with possible development in Lot 4, there will still be a substantial surplus of parking compared to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The final Platts, they show the legal description of property lines, building lines, date adjoining subdivisions easements right away so to get a survey and lot sequence proper. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for preliminary final plat of Crossroads 11, Crossroads Plat 11 be approved for the following reasons. The plat is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance and can be served by existing utilities. The plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which would classify this area commercial. The plat will create additional infill development in the primary growth area, and a note that we had a condition on here, that the deed of dedication be submitted before. It's at the city council, but we have received the deed of dedication, so that no longer applies.
Okay, are there questions, staff?
I missed that last part. You said the deed has already been...
Yeah, we received the deed of dedication after this was sent out.
So there are no conditions?
Yeah, we don't have any conditions on this.
All right.
Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant present? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is David Sheal. I'm a professional land surveyor in the state of Iowa. I'm employed by Wagenkloster Engineering and Surveying. Our address is 2705 University Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm the one who prepared those Platts.
Anybody have any questions for?
So I just have one question, and I asked this before we started, but, so the buildings that are already there, the businesses that are already there are going to remain, they're just going to own that portion of the land?
Correct.
Is that correct? And are there future plans already for those other two plots?
Not that I'm aware of. I do believe they're open for business on those two lots, though.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I gotta find where to put it. Just a minute. Okay, I guess, and we've got, we're doing one and two together?
Yeah.
So, right?
Yeah.
So if I just read the last one, is that okay? Do I have to read both?
No.
So, number two is, I want to ask that we pass the request by Crossroads Realty LLC for the final plat of Crossroads Plat Number 11, five-lot commercial subdivision located adjacent to 2060 Crossroads Boulevard.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item, vacates. A request by Waterloo Home Corporation 700, Inc. to vacate a utility easement over a former platted alley located at 1955 Locke Avenue.
This is Dornoff with staff. The applicant is requesting to vacate a utility easement over a former platted alley that was vacated in 1958. The proposed site is Zone C2 Commercial District. It was rezoned from R4 Multiple Family District by the ordinance number 5394 on March 27, 2017. To the north is C2 Commercial District. To the south is Commercial Development, Zone C1 and C2 Commercial District. To the east is Commercial Businesses, Zone M1 Light Manufacturing District. And to the west is Residential Development, Zone R2 One and Two Family Residence District. The building that sits over the easement was originally constructed in 1960, formerly known as the Knights of Columbus. The buildings in the north and the south, La Porte Road, were built between 1969 and 2014. The residential buildings to the west were built between 1935 and 1960, with the majority of them built in the 1950s. There are no utilities in the area to be vacated. There are eight-inch sanitary sewer lines located along the centers of La Porte Road, Easton Avenue, and Locke Avenue. The applicant is requesting to vacate a 16-foot by 80-foot, 1,280-square-foot easement located under the former Knights of Columbus building located at 1955 Locke Avenue. The easement is a former alley which was vacated by ordinance number 2139 on October 21st, 1958. This vacation in no way affects the parking lot or alleyway located to the west of the building. It's unclear why the easement was retained when the alley was vacated, even though the building, and the building was built on the easement just two years later and has existed for 57 years. Therefore, staff recommends that their request to vacate the approximately 1,280-square-foot, .03-acre easement located under the Knights of Columbus building located at 1955 Locke Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact throughout the area. The request would not appear to have negative pedestrian traffic conditions in the surrounding area, and there's no utilities in the easement.
Okay, are there questions for staff? Is the applicant or a representative of the applicant present that would like to make any comments?
Yeah, hi, Luke Johnson. I'm the attorney for Waterloo Home Corporation 700, Inc. And this issue arose at the closing process of when we transferred the property to price investments in March. The attorney who did review the abstract and did a title opinion noticed that there was this interest, this easement interest retained by the city. And it really, it goes right through the property. So in theory, the city could say, "We want to exercise that easement," and that would present a marketability issue. And so they asked us to apply and present to this board requesting that the city vacate so there wouldn't be that marketability issue.
Any questions? Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this issue? Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, excuse me. Commissioners will entertain a motion or further discussion.
Okay, I move that we approve the request to vacate the approximately 1,280-square-foot easement located under the Knights of Columbus building located at 1955 Locke to be approved.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that request is granted. Thank you. Now we come to the ordinance amendments, which is, number one is the amendment to the zoning ordinance governing hobby farms. We have a staff report.
This is Schrader with staff. So, going back a little bit of history, before 2011, in 2011 is when the city of Waterloo completed a kind of a pretty major overhaul of our zoning ordinance. And before that, for the most part, other than in A1 agricultural districts, farm animals were prohibited within the city of Waterloo. There was kind of a push to allow them a little bit more, kind of urban farming, sustainable, grow-your-own-food source, animals, byproducts, eggs, things like that. So as part of the 2011 overhaul of the zoning ordinance, a definition of hobby farm was created, and hobby farm was placed as a special permit use in most districts. It was a principally permitted use in the A1 agricultural district and a special permit use in other districts. So we've had a few requests since that amendment in 2011 that have been approved by special permit to have a hobby farm. There's been a couple that have been denied, and then there were a few that have been tabled indefinitely. And part of that discussion has been that commission members, board of adjustment members, have not really liked the ordinance as it's currently crafted, that basically doesn't have any real guidance on what the hobby farm should be, when it should be allowed, under what circumstances, density, things like that. And kind of, the reasoning that we went with that approach of listing it as a special permit without a lot of specific criteria was so that it could be reviewed in a case-by-case basis, knowing that sometimes it's hard to write an ordinance, you know, under that one-size-fits-all approach of where in one instance it may be, you know, appropriate, not very close to residential uses, extremely large lot size, you know, where a hobby farm might be considered an appropriate use. And on a, you know, another situation, that could be the exact same size lot, so from like a density of what would be allowed, it might be in a much more urban setting and looked at differently. So that's kind of the main reason why in the 2011, we left it a little vague and left it on a case-by-case basis, but the concern was that that doesn't give enough guidance and that was requested that staff look at a proposed amendment to that. So that's what we've done. We've got a draft ordinance here in front of you that would basically do away with the special permit process and set specific standards for the hobby farms. You know, it's definitely kind of probably what you would call on the more restrictive side of standards, erring on the side of trying to ensure that we're not having a negative impact on surrounding residential properties since we are talking about allowing farm animals in an urban setting. So that's just kind of the overview. I'll give a kind of a brief, just going through the amendment itself and then open it up for discussion. So we start out with changes in the definitions section. We're adding the word adjoining to a budding that has really nothing related. That was just kind of a cleanup that we thought might be beneficial, so. Under animals, household pets, for rabbits, we're adding a clarifier for when they're housed indoors. That was thought that it might be beneficial based on the fact that rabbits are a, would be permitted under the hobby farm provision and have a density requirement. So we're kind of thought it might be best to clarify, basically if you've got a couple, a rabbit or two inside as your pet, that's going to be different than if you're basically have a pen outside where you're raising rabbits oftentimes commercially.
Eric, I have a question. I noticed that under the urban animal hobby farm definition, that you have pot-bellied pigs, but pot-bellied pigs live in houses, they do not live outside.
Well, the main reason that we're specifically calling out pot-bellied pigs as not being permitted is because the code of ordinances prohibits swine with, all swine, which would include pot-bellied pigs, with very few exceptions, so.
So even, a person couldn't even have them as an indoor pet?
You cannot legally have a pot-bellied pig within the city of Waterloo unless you have it at the, I think it's called the Sunrise Petting Zoo?
Okay.
Or on a farm of over 40 acres. Those are the only exceptions in the code of ordinances. So then moving on, we're tweaking the definition of livestock animals to kind of keep in line with how the proposed hobby farm regulations would be provided. The current definition of hobby farm is being struck with just a reference to urban animal hobby farm. That was kind of the proposed reference for how these should be referred at. It also creates an, you know, short, you can just use the letters. That's why we've got urban animal hobby farm, and then in parentheses, UAHF, kind of gives you the ability to thereafter, for the most part, just refer to it as a UAHF. Under feedlot, any parcel of land or premise on which the principal use is a concentrated feeding within a confined area of cattle, hogs, or sheep. There's a suggested addition in there. So this is getting into more of a true farm setting, which we don't have a lot of farm settings with farm animals on the fringe of the city, but there are a few of them. But the suggested change is to basically allow the existing ones, but not to allow new feedlots or expansion of existing feedlots, other than if it's compliant with the urban animal hobby farm requirements. So then on the next page is the new definition of an urban animal hobby farm, and then you go through the districts where the regulations are being changed. The first one is in the A1 agricultural district. So currently in the A1 agricultural, what would kind of fall under farm animals was kind of spread out in a couple of different sections. So we're reorganizing that all under number one. And basically, if you are in the A1 agricultural district and are on a farm of 35 acres, then you don't have to meet the urban animal hobby farm regulations. You would basically have the requirement for 10-foot setback from, for all confinement areas, and there's already a setback for buildings. So we weren't tweaking that. In the A1, under stables, which gets into horses, we really were not proposing to, horses don't fall under the urban animal hobby farm. They're regulated separately, and we're really not proposing to significantly change the regulations for horses under the principal permitted uses in the A1 agricultural. Still list the stables. There was the proposed suggestion to add a minimum lot size of 10 acres, and basically if they would be under the 10 acres, then it would, it would go to the different density Then in the RR Rural Residential, the R1, One and Two Family Residential, there should be very similar changes there, just basically putting urban animal hobby farm, and noting that it's in Section 10-27-1U, where the actual regulations for the urban animal hobby farm are listed. So then, on what shows up is page 150 on the bottom there, that's the special permit section where a hobby farm is currently listed as a special permit, so it's proposed to be struck from that section. And then the rest of it gets into the subsection U. That's a new subsection U regulating urban animal hobby farms. So here's where it goes through. Again, it provides for that clear provision that these regulations don't apply to the A1 agricultural district of over 35 acres. So if there are farm animals existing or proposed that are either not in the A1 agricultural district or are in the A1 agricultural district on less than 35 acres, the UAHF regulations would apply. It breaks the animals into essentially kind of large and intermediate-sized animals, which have a minimum fenced confined area of 40,000 square feet, and then small animals, which have a minimum fenced confined area of 20,000 square feet. Requires that the owner reside on the property, requires containing shelters for animals, lean-tos, tarps, carports, and similar structures are prohibited. Fowl must be kept in enclosure fenced area at all time, at all non-daylight hours. There's regulations on the shelters, keeping them predator resistant. Then it gets into the density requirements, which for the large and intermediate-sized animals is set at two animals for the first 20,000 square feet and one additional animal for each 20,000 square feet. So that's basically 20,000 square feet per animal, but you've got to have 40,000 square feet to have any. And then for small animals, it's set at four animals for the first 20,000 square feet and one additional animal for each 5,000 square feet. So again, it's basically 5,000 square feet per animal, but you've got to have at least 20,000 square feet to have any. There, for large and intermediate animals, there's a 10-foot setback for the fenced confined area from neighboring property lines. There's wording in there about keeping the confinement area and enclosures clean, dry, odor-free, neat, sanitary, limitation on accumulation of excrement, which is the four cubic feet, not cubic yards.
Thank you.
There's a provision to cover when animals are born into an urban animal hobby farm. Basically, they can remain in there for up to 12 weeks, at which time they would either need to be removed unless there's, you know, density room allows. And then there's also a provision to address going before the board of adjustment. Since it's no longer a special permit, if you meet the standards for a hobby farm, it would be considered a permitted use. Because we're, you know, writing these regulations on the more restrictive side, we did anticipate that there could be situations where a proposed hobby farm or based on, you know, the proposed number of animals being proposed at a specific site may be very appropriate for that location, and they're going to be forced to go through a variance process of which by strict interpretation of the zoning ordinance, the standards by which a request has to adhere to for a variance are very strict, very difficult, including the hardship requirements. Basically, the ordinance requires that to be granted a variance, you have to have a hardship that's not monetary-related, that's kind of unique to the property. So we've got wording in there that basically allows the board of adjustments to grant variances to that specific provision that doesn't have to meet the normal standards that a variance would have to meet. It kind of opens it up a little bit.
Stacey, can I ask a question? What about those cat lovers and dog lovers that have 10, 12 dogs or cats in the house? Is that still going to be covered by the square footage, or?
That, that's not covered by square footage. That's not covered by this hobby farm provision at all. Anyone with that currently would be in violation of the zoning ordinance that limits, it's, I don't know if I have that page handy, but it's.
Four more.
Yeah.
Four more, okay.
It's under the definition of a kennel, which if you have your full zoning ordinance would be in that, but that page isn't being changed, so it's not included in here. But you can, if I'm remembering off the top of my head, right, you can have up to four dogs and up to four cats and not be considered a kennel. So anything more than that is considered a kennel, which requires commercial zoning classification.
Does the city get many complaints about, in the past, that ever happened? I mean, numbers of dogs.
I don't know about many. I know code enforcement gets complaints on numbers of cats or dogs from time to time. I don't think it's a significant amount that I'm aware of, but. And then the last area is to address beekeeping. We've been getting a lot of inquiry about whether or not it is legal to do beekeeping within the city of Waterloo. That's kind of also a growing trend apparently, so we looked at what some other communities allow for that, and again, we're kind of going with maybe a little bit more on the restrictive side on terms of minimum lot size we're requiring and the number of hives that we're allowing based on that lot size, but we don't want to create a situation where it's creating a nuisance to adjoining property owners. But we are basically allowing for a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and that you can have two hives with one swarm per hive for every 20,000 square feet, no more than six hives on any particular property unless you're on, you know, basically a farm on more than 35 acres. So that's kind of the overview. Happy to address additional questions.
I just, do you want to go ahead? I just have one. Under, I'm not sure where this is at, but anyway, page 84 in our number five, the bottom of the page there, if, since we're talking about chickens, it says no UAHF shall be operated so that crowing, cackling, I know we don't have roosters, but cackling, gobbling, bleating, or foul noises occur at a level that creates a nuisance on adjacent properties. I'm just wondering if anybody's complained about these five chickens.
I'm not aware of any complaints that we've got on the five chickens, but I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not aware, but I'm not sure if.
I don't know how you're going to keep five chickens from not saying anything.
Yeah, right. And that's, you know, kind of why we went with the wording that, you know, talks about at a level that's.
Creates a nuisance.
Creates a nuisance on adjoining properties. So yeah, you certainly can't expect that you're going to have farm animals that are absolutely silent, so.
If you have a question?
Yeah. My question is, so if someone is going to have a hobby farm, they will need to apply for a permit?
Nope.
Okay, so how are you going to regulate? I mean, if you don't have to require a permit, and it's not like a dog or cat where you have to come in and get a license every year, how are you going to regulate and know who has a hobby farm and who doesn't, and if they are adhering to the ordinance?
Complaint driven. Complaint driven.
Is that a good idea? I mean, then aren't you just chasing your tail all the time, rather than having a list of who has hobby farms, so that you kind of have a starting point to both regulate and also to maintain, to see, you know, is this something that's really growing? Maybe if it's really growing, we need to make sure that we're writing the appropriate ordinances to cover that growth, those kinds of things? And it just seems like, because of the fact that this whole farm-to-table process is really growing in leaps and bounds, if you start this process and you have no control over it, and no idea who's doing what, where, that you're just asking for problems.
Carol, I had, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Eric and I had a long discussion about this earlier today.
Okay.
And my question to him was basically kind of the same, but I was more concerned with who's protecting the people that own the surrounding properties? There's nothing in there for that, other than, you know, it can't be a nuisance as far as the noises and so on, but, yeah, and I have an issue with very much what you're talking about. Just, it seems, it seems like the ordinance is restrictive as far as what, you know, the requirements are to be in urban hobby farm, but there's nothing in there that protects the guy next door, or the guy behind him, or whatever. And I, and I, I for one, don't think farm animals belong in town.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't, I don't think they have a place in a residential neighborhood. I think that, no, I don't want to go into that because it's not important. If I do another question for you. When you read this through, you got down to here for density, did I understand you to say that, okay, as defined in sub-paragraph 2A above, it's set at two animals for the first 20,000 or 40,000 square feet?
40,000.
Okay. I, I apparently misunderstood your...
Yeah, I may have misspoke, so yeah, you, so, I know it reads kind of a little bit confusing, because it's 42 animals at 40, and then one additional per 20. So basically what that means is, it's one animal per 20, but you've got to have 40 to start.
Unless you're, unless you're into smaller animals.
Right, yeah, I'm just, I'm talking about for the...
Right, right.
Yeah, but it uses the same basic concept there of providing that minimum lot size.
I mean, I can see a lot of areas in the city that are basically residential, that were, you know, there may be some lots that are at least 20,000 square feet.
Oh yeah, oh sure.
And I'm not so sure that that's a good fit in a residential neighborhood, regardless of lots size.
So can I go back to what I asked?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because I didn't get any response, and...
I didn't mean to...
You know, if you have to license a cat or a dog, then the least that you should have to do is register your hobby farm and pay a registration fee. I mean, aren't you, I mean, the equity of the issue is, is that if you're doing it for one animal, you should be doing it for all animals.
Right. Um, I don't have much of a response. I mean, I certainly understand what you're saying. The pet licensing is provided in the code of ordinances through the clerk's office. We really, this is being regulated through the zoning ordinance, we really haven't done a lot of licensing through the zoning ordinance. Usually, uses don't have to be licensed through there. When we did the 2011 amendment for hobby farms, we listed them as a special permit, and we did list them as, you know, essentially a license, I think, animal. You know, to my recollection, I think there were like two, approximately two special permits that were approved for new hobby farms. The wording of that ordinance required any existing setups to obtain the special permit within a certain time period. I know there are animal operations out there, and I'm not aware of any others that got approval, but it's...
I just think you really strongly need to consider, you know, and whether there's a cost associated or not, but I tell you what, you're going to have people, citizens of Waterloo coming and saying, "Why am I having to pay a licensing fee for my cat or my dog?" And these people down the road that have chickens or whatever...
Right.
Aren't having to do the same.
Yep. And I, again, I'm kind of speculating, but I think with the cats and dogs, there's, as I understand it, the main reason there's the licensing there is because there's some requirements for vaccinations. I don't know if it's limited to vaccinations, or if it goes beyond that or not. And that was one of the questions when preparing this ordinance that was put out there, is what, what does the health department require for minimum standards, and for vaccinations, and anything like that? And I did have a conversation with the health department, and they don't have anything that covers any sort of farm animal. So apparently, there are no sort of vaccination requirements or anything like that, so.
Okay, this is Tyson, and I'm listening to this, and I kind of agree with Carol and Mr. Holderman, that, you know, most folks have the best intentions, but there are just individuals out there going to abuse this, you know, and I hate to see us, I mean, I'm thinking, well, what are we on this commission for? Okay, you know, what is our job and our role? And we want to certainly speak for the entire community, in the best interest of the community, and is there anything that we can do? Can we make a recommendation for someone to consider it with the planning and zoning, or the city council? I mean, are we stepping out of our own, out of bounds here in this? I mean, maybe it's not a big problem, but I see this being a problem. I've got some neighbors that got a couple acres, you know, and thank goodness that they haven't seen any animals yet, you know, but it could happen. You know, I mean, just, this is how I feel. I mean, just, I want people to be accountable, that's all.
Right, and I, I guess I'll just put my two cents worth in too, as you're sharing that, Carol. The fact of licensing, or at the very least, keeping a track of these permits, and keeping track of what else is going on out there, because otherwise, it could proliferate, it could expand, I don't, proliferate, I can't say that word. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I do think we should have a handle on it. I do.
I guess I have, oh, sorry, I just have a question in regards to the ones that have already been approved. I'm assuming that if this has been passed, they are grandfathered, and there are no changes, or will they have to make sure to fit with those square footages?
They would have to. So normally, when a zoning ordinance is amended, there is a section of the zoning ordinance addressing non-conforming, commonly referred to as grandfathered, that basically, if you had something established that was legally established before adoption of an amendment that made it not comply, that you become legal non-conforming or grandfathered. This ordinance has specific, specific, now I can't talk, wording that indicates that they are not grandfathered, and that the existing animal operations would have to comply no later than July 1st, 2017 is the date that we had in there, but that, you know, date was just kind of one week. It gets used frequently, just because it's, you know, the halfway point of the calendar year, fiscal year, not the fiscal year, that really has any impact on this, but it really could be put at anything, especially, you know, if this request ends up getting tabled and kind of pushed a little farther out there, we have to look at that.
And then Craig?
Oh, you go ahead.
Well, and I have one other question, and I just want to make sure, if we pass this or approve it or whatever, under H, it talks about this density, and we talked about the square footage of that, where they have the chickens. And I just want to make sure that the four animals for the first 2,000 square foot, and one additional for each additional 5,000, is that land large enough? I, I'm not positive when we talked about how large that land is.
So the request that was on the agenda earlier that was tabled, based on the current proposed regulations, could have four chickens, not five?
Right, so we're still not approving that? I mean, really?
Right, if these regulations were approved as is today, let's say, then they, I mean, they'd have to review some of the other, you know, issues, but I think for the most part, four or five chickens would be legal, and they could either get rid of one chicken, or go before the Board of Adjustment, asking for a variance to the requirement.
So I want to go back to my original question. I think that I'm hearing consensus from the group, that they agree with what I'm talking about, so where do we go from here?
If this request is tabled, that's fine. We can work with that. You know, what we're looking for is input on the ordinance, you know, regarding, I'm trying to look back in the section where we're deleting it, here's the language that was in there before. "An approved hobby farm shall require an annual license issued by planning staff. The license shall be valid from July 1 to the following June 30. Every hobby farm shall be inspected prior to issuance of a license. Failure of a hobby farm to comply with the requirements for a hobby farm, or any requirements or conditions placed on special permit approval for a hobby farm shall result in the license being denied." So, I think, depending on how this grows, as you say, the ability for the planning department to, you know, annually license and inspect, this might be brought into question. But basically, if we're just permitting from like a tracking standpoint, where it's kind of a one-time permit, that's probably not problematic at all. I don't know, I'd have to review with Noel if we were talking about an annual license. He might have concerns on that.
I still, I still think it needs, we need to have a special permit process, simply because that also gives the, not only some sort of regulation, but it also gives the surrounding property owners at least a voice.
I think if any new business comes in, there's a review process for that, and I don't think that there should be an issue with at least some sort of a, "It's approved to have it, but you need to show us that you have the square footage." And whether it's just a one-on-one discussion, or if it has to come in front of the council to do it, I feel like there should at least be some sort of way to say that, yes, we meet these requirements, just as any other building would have to do.
Yeah, but, I mean, there's a significant difference between the coming in to a staff person and documenting that you can meet the requirements, and then even if it's a permit, so to speak, you're issued that permit that still doesn't provide those adjoining property owners that input process. So, you know, the potential issue I see is that, you know, it could be listed as a special permit, but more often than not, something that's a special permit doesn't necessarily have a ton of specific set standards. I suppose in theory, you could keep all of the specific set standards, and make it a special permit use. The question becomes, you know, if I propose a hobby farm, or someone proposes a hobby farm, and they propose it to meet every single requirement that's provided for number of animals, setbacks, buildings, all of that stuff is all met, then, but they still have to go through that special permit process. Basically, then the question becomes, what grounds is there to not approve that special permit? So let's say you have two neighbors objecting. Well, why are they objecting? Because they think it's going to have a negative impact on them. Well, the specific standards were written in a way that's supposed to be, if you meet this, you won't have a negative impact. So now we have this contradictory, and it could, we've seen that before, where salvage yards are a good example. Like I said, most special permits don't have a lot of specific standards. Salvage yard is kind of one that does, but still has to get special permit approval. And we've had that kind of come up before, is, well, I meet all these standards, but I still need a special permit, and you can say no, just because, just because one neighbor doesn't want it. That's the potential concern, if we have all these detailed standards, and still a special permit process.
But still, you know, just keeps, in my mind, I'm going back to, if I owned property next to it and didn't want it, I would want some way to register my objection, or if I were in favor of it. But, you know, I mean, this doesn't give any surrounding property, in my opinion, it doesn't protect the folks next door. And I, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but zoning ordinance is supposed to be for continuity of the type of property surrounding?
Yep, and I would say, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree at all, I would just say, the way we proposed it, we're trying to protect the property owner next door by writing a restrictive ordinance that...
I understand.
But, but, no, I understand.
There's, there's no way for the property owner next door to come in and say, you know, "This is going to be an issue, I don't want to hear clucking chickens, or mooing cow..."
But, I mean, that's...
During the day.
You have that with almost any use. For instance, you could demolish your house today, and build a duplex back in its place. There's been a lot of discussion about that over the years, but the way the city of Waterloo's zoning ordinance currently reads, any district that a single-family home is permitted, a duplex is permitted. And that's, you know, sometimes not very well-known, because you'll see, we've got an R1 district, and a lot of people assume that means single-family homes only, but it doesn't. You can build a duplex, and we've had concern on that raised before, it's like, how can they build a duplex there?
If your lot is big enough, you can.
Principally permitted. If your lot is big enough, you can.
If it's big enough, you can.
So I, there's a huge difference between farm animals, but that's essentially what we're doing, is creating them as a principal permitted use. If your lot is big enough, if you meet standards, you can.
Okay.
But there's a difference there, I definitely recognize that.
Okay, this is Tyson again, and we can be here for a couple more hours, talking about chickens and everything else, but, but I'd like to make a motion that we table this for this month, and then look at it again next month in the meantime. I'd like to have planning and zoning take a look at it, and this, what you've given us is just great, I believe, but we've still got a few issues, and maybe if you can do some research, more research, and what other communities are doing, and maybe give us some options as a board.
Sure.
I don't know if that's fair or not, or, I don't want to make a decision tonight without more research on it, you know?
Well, I think we've given them some input that hopefully you were looking for. Maybe, you know, okay, so we have a motion on the table, I'm sorry, to table.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
I think it would be helpful maybe to have a work session, so that, you know, we have some input, we can give input into what the final suggested ordinance changes might be. And that way, we're not having to go back and forth, back and forth, because, you know, I feel very strongly in my position, and I cannot support the ordinance as it's written.
I feel very strongly in my position, and I cannot support the ordinance as it's written. And I just want to make sure that you guys have a firm understanding of what I feel, and I'm hearing other people saying the same thing, so.
Maybe we can look at trying to schedule something about halfway between this meeting and next meet, month's meeting.
I'd be for that.
I agree.
Tuesdays were good for me, I don't...
That's what I was going to say, maybe two Tuesdays from now or something.
Motion on the floor to table, do we have a second for that motion?
I second that.
Okay, they moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair, both aye. That issue is tabled, and I want to thank the staff for all the work that they put into it. I think you've done a good job.
It's a good start.
Yeah.
The next item, we have discussion items.
I'm not aware of any discussion items.
I just see a group discussion.
Since there are.
Do we have some people in the audience?
Yes.
Are these work sessions going to be open to public?
Yes, they would be.
Do you care if I gave five minutes and gave a little spiel on this, in case I'm not able to make the next one?
You know, we probably should have, before we can...
I, I'm sorry, you're right, we should have...
Robert's rules are just...
Sure, come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Wendell Lupkus, I live at 4862 West Fourth Street. We're at the corner of Fourth and Shawless in Waterloo, right across from the park. It's the old, old Klingeman Farmstead, if you will. I guess my major objection to the ordinance, the way it's written, is the, I understand what you're trying to do, but the property that I purchased in 1999, I selected specifically because it was agriculturally zoned, okay? And if I could, can I pass this out? Okay, my main objection, I understand, within the residential districts of the city, you know, those people, basically, they live there because that's where their housing is, and to introduce cows and whatever else, chickens, into that is kind of foreign, okay? The zoning ordinance and this particular amendment talks about, if you're in the ag district, you can have ag animals, you know, if you've got 35 acres, okay? I've got about eight and a half acres. What I passed around there is, since I purchased the property, I raise a rare breed of draft horse, and those are all the horses that we've sold around the country over the course of that time. All the ones that start with Lupkus, those are the ones that were born there. So, you know, we're not just necessarily a hobby farm, we're actually, I'd say probably as much as most 30 or 40 acre farms, you know, we're actively involved. Obviously, most of these are replaced by tractors, but they're still, we do some very specific genetic testing with, in cooperation with Gus Catheron, who used to be at the University of Kentucky, he's now at Texas A&amp;M. We actually worked when they developed the test for JEB, which, well, it's a really gruesome disease. We provided information to the University of Guelph in Ontario, Canada. We've had an ongoing testing program with UC Davis, and, well, the latest disease of choice has been researched by the University of Minnesota, and ongoing thing. And we're also currently, my stallion there is the only one that we offer artificial insemination for this breed in the United States. So it's kind of, from an agricultural standpoint, it's, I think, of least as much importance as basically a 40 acre tract where, you know, you raise a few cows, nothing against cows. So I guess my thought is, I don't know that the 35 acre threshold is really the way to determine whether it's actually agricultural, or whether it's the same as somebody raising rabbits in the backyard. So I guess I would, I would ask that you consider the agricultural part of it, waive the 35 acre restriction, and as long as the thresholds, like the 40,000 square feet of confinement are met, and it's zoned agricultural, it should be treated as agricultural. That's my feeling. With that, if you have any questions?
I've got one.
Sure.
So, I'm just making sure you're understanding that the horses are not part of the hobby farm. They're regulated completely separately. So unless you're proposing to add other farm animals...
Okay, well, the way I read it, I thought, anything that's agriculture, under 35 acres, if you have any animals like that, that you need to have...
No, just the farm animals covered by the urban animal hobby farm regulations. Horses are not included as part of that, and are covered by the stables provision, which in the A1 agricultural is a principal permitted use, provides an area devoted to such purposes at least 5,000 square feet per animal, provided further that no structure or building for the stabling of horses or tethering area be closer than 50 feet from a budding residential property. Area devoted to such use shall be kept clean and sanitary conditions. So there's basically, that's what's there now, and there's no change. The only change is a minimum 10 acre lot size, but that's, basically covers the commercial, like, public stables and riding academies. The private, non-commercial stables are a principal permitted use in the A1 agricultural district, do not have a minimum lot size, and the only density requirement is one per 5,000, which is, I think, pretty low. Any other zoning district for stables, it's one per 10,000. You need 20,000 square feet to have any, and then it's one per 10,000 for anywhere else.
Okay. Well, then that doesn't affect me. However, I still would say that, then unless that agricultural district, or that particular parcel within the ag zoning abuts residential, because the way it's written right now, you could be in the middle of the ag zoning, be three quarters of a mile from any residential district, and you still have to deal with, you know, all these basically urban-type things, you know, if you have a milk cow or whatever. I would say if it's, you know, if it's not a budding residential, it should be treated as ag regardless of the size, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to come forward, sir, please do.
My name is Craig Strine, and I live at 3574 West Shawless Road, Waterloo, which is the far southwest corner of the city limits. We don't have city water, city sewer. We do have, now that we have a new police chief, we do have some police protection. The last time I called the fire department, they got in an argument with me that we weren't in the city limits. So, this was my grandfather's place. It was originally 53 acres. The city came in at one point and took it all to seven for the Kautowski-Greendale area. I have since then purchased 10 more farmland next to me in anticipation of these future problems. So, to my east and to my south are big cornfields. To the west and to the north is the Kautowski-Greendale area. On my 17 acres, I have three horses, a burrow, and three lowline Angus cattle. It seems to me that this new proposal would not allow me to have my three lowline Angus cattle, is that correct?
I would say that's not correct. It would, I mean, so I don't know the zoning of your property.
Okay, I can, I just checked. 10 acres of it is zoned agriculture, seven is zoned, is zoned residential.
Residential. So, as currently proposed, but obviously, that's what's been a big part of the discussion up here, but as currently proposed, even in the ag zoning, since it's on less than 35, the hobby farm provisions come into play. The horses are regulated separately. The other ones, it's, are basically, would be considered larger, the other animals would basically be considered large or intermediate-sized animals. So they would have the, what is it, one per 20, right? Or no, one per 10?
One per 20, 40,000.
I got 3,000, 17 acres, and...
Yeah, so you would fit well within that density requirement.
So I wouldn't have any problems with this amendment then, to your knowledge?
Yep.
Okay, I was just totally confused, and...
Although, if, so you would have fallen under the 2011 amendment that would have required it to get a special permit?
I was, and I plead guilty, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, I understand that a lot of people weren't aware of that. And that's, one of the items being discussed, was whether there could be any sort of like annual permit or licensing as part of hobby farm. So that's, as currently proposed, it wasn't there, but that was one of the things being discussed. So that's probably the only part that, if put in there, could potentially impact you. But it sounds like the density part, you'd be fine with, you've got plenty of room there.
And I don't have any neighbors. I mean, it's cornfields, and, you know, I don't have anybody to make mad.
Right.
Okay? And I like it that way.
If I understood him correctly, you said you had 10 acres that were zoned agricultural?
And the seven that were on is now zoned residential. It was zoned agriculture until Mr. Kautowski took it from my grandfather to make it his...
But what I'm getting at is...
Yes, sir.
He's got the 10 acres that are agricultural, he wouldn't need a special permit anyway, would he? Didn't the special permit only imply if it was in a residential?
Well, no, actually, you're right. In the A1, it didn't need a special permit.
Correct.
Correct.
So he'd be okay?
Under the old one.
Under the old one, he's okay, so they don't need, they're not going to come after you for anything.
I mean, I can't imagine they would, but, okay. I don't want to waste your time, I appreciate it.
You're fine, thank you for coming forward.
And, you know, it is, this probably doesn't have anything to do, but it's a bit frustrating paying city taxes with no city services, you know? I just, it's a bit frustrating. Thank you for your time, you ladies and gentlemen, you certainly are very nice.
Thank you for your comments, and thanks for coming in. Any other, okay, I assume we can move on to our next item on the agenda, which is adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good meeting everybody.
Thank you all for coming.